Well, good evening, council. It is nice to see everybody. Most everybody's here. It's good to see everybody. It is the regular council meeting at 6:30-ish PM Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. It is virtual city council meeting, and Lita, will you do the call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
She was on.
Council.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Treeen.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Meeting accessibility this evening pursuant to the governor's emergency proclamation 20-25. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, the city website www.samamish.us/tv21, city YouTube, HTTPS/for YouTube/wwwww.youtube.com, and Comcast, Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21, YouTube, www.youtube.com, and Comcast, Channel 21, within Samamish only. Pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Councilmember Tree, would you like to help us with that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, councilmember. First up is the approval of the agenda, so I'm looking for a motion.
Bill moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. Go with a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, were you opposed or are you for, Pam? Okay, you are for? Okay. So the motion passes. Okay, emergency management. Andrew, take the floor.
Yes, good evening, mayor, councilmembers. Great to see everyone coming back to City Hall. My name is Andrew Stevens. I'm the emergency manager for Eastside Fire and Rescue. Just want to make sure you guys can see these slides back home. Perfect. So here today to talk real quickly on COVID-19. You guys are pulling up the slides, right? That works?
We're not seeing them remotely.
Deputy Mayor, do you see them now?
Now they're going.
Great. You go back to the first slide, please.
Councilmember Stewart, do you see them?
Wonderful. So, want to touch briefly on COVID, the current situation that we're seeing across the state and the nation. Also, give an update on our vaccine operations here within Samamish and eastern King County as a whole. By and large, the fourth wave of COVID is still continues to spread across the state and across Washington and King County. There is some talk that the fourth wave might be plateauing, however, that is somewhat speculative at this point. We really have to see what the data is going to look like over the next, you know, several weeks. Governor announced today a pause on any phase changes. Many of us were expecting King County as a whole to roll back a phase just due to the metrics, both on daily case counts and hospitalizations. We have not been meeting those metrics for several weeks, but the governor decided just to pause and kind of let that play out for at least the next two weeks. One alarming trend is that we are seeing more and more variants become present, not just across the nation, but also in Washington. Public Health announced later earlier this morning that there's at least five variants of severe concern that are showing to be more highly contagion and also causing more severe infections. And another shocking trend, I guess, in this fourth wave of COVID is that children are now accounting for 22% of all new COVID-19 cases nationally. Just to put that in perspective, that number was 3% of all cases a year ago. Now, there are some factors to consider with this, obviously, that most, a large percentage of adults have received vaccines or starting to become vaccinated, but you are seeing these variants being more transmissible and also result in more severe, I guess, infection, illness, and even death in younger populations. Looking at hospitalizations across the state, they were over 600 last week, and that's more than we've seen in months. And the majority of those are populations in their 20s, 30s, and 40s, under 50 years old. Here we go. Next slide, please, Lita. Looking at positive cases on the left-hand side, you're seeing King County, and we are about to break the 100,000 positive cases in King County. If you look at, I think, the first two surges, and we kind of go back in time and remember what it was like last spring and last summer, and all the precautions that everyone was taking, then obviously the large surge over the winter, the surge that we're currently in, and we might be seeing that slight decrease, was worse than anything we saw last year besides that winter surge. So I think that's some of the reason, if you go around and you look at what's happening, you look at what people are doing, and really just letting down their guard somewhat when it comes to COVID, that's no shock that we're seeing, you know, exponential increase in cases. The chart on the right is Samamish. We've seen 1,232 cases in Samamish, and just in the last two weeks, we're still seeing hospitalizations as well. So this is not something that is over. I'm definitely urging everyone to continue their precautions and realize that the longer we continue this spread, we're allowing this virus to mutate, and the longer we're going to be in, in the long run. Next slide, please. This is just a quick snapshot of the hospitalizations across King County as well. You're seeing a huge increase, and this is with children. I read a study earlier this week, and there is some, you know, little bit of unknowns, a little bit of give or take as far as how many young children have died due to COVID in the last year. They're placing that number around 300 to 600, but that would still put COVID as either the number six or number nine cause of death for children under 10. So this is not something that is just something to be shrugged at, something that says that children cannot be affected. If any other situation, I think, was out there and you knew it was, you know, one of the top leading causes of death for children, people would be taking much more precautions. Next slide. Our vaccine operations across the whole have been doing amazingly well. The Lake Samamish site, this is what you're looking at, is a picture of where everyone, the populations that have been using the Lake Samamish site, which is a partnership with the city of Samamish, Snoqualmie Tribe, City of Izoqua, and Eastside Fire. This is where our populations have been coming from. The darker the color is, the higher the populations. And as of today, we've administered over 6,000 doses, first doses of Moderna at that site. We still have another 1,900 first doses booked, and we have 8,000 booster shots booked through the next month and a half, basically through mid-June. Now, one thing we have noticed in the next, I guess, in the last week, is that we have seen, we've kind of reached that precipice of those people who really wanted to obtain a vaccine appointment, seems like most of those individuals have been able to do so. We've seen this not only in our site, but in sites across King County, across the state, where we've reached that level of saturation. We opened up 1,800 appointments last week. We still had 1,300 appointments for next week remaining and still open now. We are doing things to try to target individual populations, to maybe find groups that could not go to this site or having trouble. So this Thursday, we're doing something different. We're going to open up an evening clinic down at the Lake Samamish site from 5:00 to 8:00. So if there's working populations who haven't been able to obtain a vaccine yet, we're going to see how this plays out, and if it fills up, we can continue that as well. But it's been amazingly well. You look at where we're pulling these populations, I think having a vaccine site on the east side has really helped out these populations. And last slide, please. I think a testament to that success, if you look at the King County dashboard for vaccines administered, King County is sitting roughly at 66.1% of all populations age 16 and higher that have started their vaccine series, received at least one dose. Now, you look at Samamish, I'm just pulling the three top ZIP codes here, 98074, which is the northern half of Samamish, we're sitting at 82.7% that started their first dose, or started their series of vaccinations. 98075, 83.2%, and 29, which encompasses, you know, a little bit of southern Samamish, but also parts of Izoqua, is now at, you know, roughly 75%. Our populations have jumped on board with this amazingly well. Those are great numbers. And the good news is, in the near future, we're hoping that Pfizer or the FDA will approve emergency authorization use for Pfizer vaccine for populations age 12 to 16. So we'll be able to target even a newer demographic, more populations, and eventually get to that point of hopefully herd immunity. Fight's not over. I definitely urge people to maintain cautions. If you still have gotten your vaccine, it does not mean you should stop wearing a mask and just drop your guard on every front. The CDC has released new guidance on things you can do, such as outdoor gatherings and not being able to wear a mask possibly outside. But this is really good numbers. It's been a wide success story, and hopefully in the near future, we can say our vaccine operations are done. It's the kind of job we want to eventually work our way out of. That means we did it right. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Andrew. That is exciting to see 82 and 83% of that. That is amazing. Good job, and excellent job with the stuff down there. I'm going to come down, I was going to come down there today, but I will be down there for a day. Okay, so we do have some questions for you this evening, so let's start with Councilmember Gamblin.
Great. Hey, thanks again, Andrew. Just excellent. Am I on? It's on. Okay. Anyway, anybody, it looks like, I don't need to say this, within 83% for Samamish, but I brought somebody down to the site at Lake Samamish, and easy, clean, professional. We were checked in quickly in the car. All of it happens when you're driving in the car. The injection happens when you're in the car. Anybody who has any hesitation at all, don't hesitate. It's easy. You're out of there in 15 minutes. The only hardest part is they make you wait a few minutes to make sure there's no adverse reactions, and they give you a bottle of water and a cliff bar and send you on your way. So anybody who's hesitant, don't be hesitant. It's easy to do. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, next person is Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks for your report. Very encouraging. The high 80s are outstanding, frankly, for anywhere in this country. And kudos to our residents for jumping on board like this. Two questions for you. First of all, when you talked about children earlier, were you talking about people 16 and under, 18 and under, or what?
Yes. Nationally, children age 16 and under, that's making up that 22 percentile nationwide.
Okay, good. And are you seeing any indication of a no-show factor developing?
Absolutely. We are seeing a no-show factor. That is a combination of, I think, multiple things. Some of the several, several of the big sites that, I guess, are also out there in the region have opened up appointments to walk-ins, to no registration necessary. So if someone may have had an appointment for next Monday and they can get in today, they just drop, and perhaps they forget to cancel. What I do through the day at the site is I'm constantly canceling out no-shows, and that'll open up the appointment back in our system. So we're still seeing close to 300 a day at our site. We were expecting next week to really see that push towards 600 a day when it comes, when our first round individuals come back for seconds, for their second shot. But just due to that sharp decrease, we'll only basically have this one week, sir, of not even 600 a day, and then we'll mostly be going straight to boosters. So with close to 1,500 appointments still available, we have stopped ordering prime doses because we don't want to have be sitting on too many that we cannot get rid of. We are taking, you know, walk-ins at the end of the day and throughout the day. If we can talk to someone and we have the ability to pull extra doses out of vials, we will get them in. So we're going to continue to push. We're constantly meeting with representatives from both cities and from the tribe on how to reach new populations. We recently are working with some community development and economic development folks in Izoqua to work with both the chambers of Samamish and Izoqua for incentives. So not only will they get the gift bag with the waters, but also possibly coupons to local businesses. So it's also an incentive, and it drives also, you know, money back into the local economy as well. So if they come and they get a vaccine, show their vaccine card, maybe they'll get a free cup of coffee or a donut at some of the local stores as well. So we're looking at it, you know, and I want to mention, I forgot to say during my report, the 6,000 doses that we've done here at the Lake Samamish site, that is excluding the, also, we've done 1,000 doses with our mobile vaccination teams with homebound residents and adult care facilities. We've done over 7,000 doses at the Snoqualmie Casino, and we've done pop-up clinics of 200-plus a day at the Vedic Temple, at the Samamish mosque, at the Klahani Center, the Klahani Pool. So when we can find populations and it's easier for us to come to them, we do that as well.
Okay. Are there any populations you're having trouble reaching?
At this time, it does not seem like it with these numbers, no. Our demographics have been looking amazingly well. Seems to be exceeding expectations on what just the normal demographics of who lives in these areas are. We are working hand-in-hand with human services staff, so we're, you know, they are registering limited English-speaking or no-English-speaking populations. And, you know, I guess with all the work we've done beforehand, I think we have most of our bases covered. There's always going to be, I think, a younger population who is a little bit still vaccine hesitant. They think they're invincible, and they're waiting to see how things play out. I would urge those folks just to continue to get their shot now. Don't allow this thing to mutate, to variant even more. You're seeing a lot of these, some even double mutations emerge now, where the virus is actually more contagious. It is, it can actually, the vaccines can be less effective in protecting you fully from catching it, but they are still both, the vaccines are both very strongly, you know, they can be very effective in protecting people from severe injury or severe illness and death. So even if some of these new variants are more contagious, that vaccine will still protect you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have deputy mayor, followed by councilmember Ross.
Great, thank you. So Andrew, you had a slide up that showed case rates comparatively for, you know, I think, King County as well as Samamish. But what I'm curious about is hospitalization and death rates and how that compares with the height of the pandemic. I understand that, you know, kids are a population that wasn't originally being infected than they are now, which is driving the case rates as a whole up. But I'm curious about hospitalization and death rates and whether or not we're seeing a decrease there based on the numbers of vaccinated people we have. Do you know that? Is that the case or no?
The slide that's up right now is showing our hospitalizations rate from beginning March of last year through today. And as you can see, our hospitalization rates are almost on par or slightly just beneath the worst of it, which was this winter, and obviously that initial spike when we were seeing a lot of elderly populations being hospitalized. Those are younger populations. And I think I mentioned in the report, we saw 600 hospitalizations across King County in the last week alone, and that is, it hasn't been months since that has happened. So it is the 20-year-olds, the 30-year-olds, the 40-year-olds. Most of the groups you're seeing hospitalized now, which is, King County has not met those metrics in weeks, are under 50. You are seeing children become sick, and you're also seeing several instances of what's called, you know, long COVID, you know, these chronic symptoms of fatigue, of shortness of breath, just, you know, very strong instances of, you know, not mortality but morbidity that are going to affect young people's lives. So it's not something to entirely shrug off at all.
Okay. And then what about the death rate?
Death rate has definitely slowed, but simply because the highest risk for fatalities was the most vulnerable, the over 65-year-olds. But we have had, I can look at the numbers, we have not had any fatalities most recently in Samamish. We're still sitting at 14 last time I looked, but you are still seeing fatalities across King County.
Okay. I'd be curious to know, and not now, just at your leisure, just hospitalization rate specific to Samamish. I'm just kind of curious based on how high our rate of vaccination is here, if that makes a difference, if Samamish is tracking at a lower rate than what we're seeing in the county.
I do know that Samamish has seen 14 hospitalizations in the last two weeks, or not 14, four hospitalizations in the last two weeks.
Okay. And this is all King?
Yeah, it is pretty stagnant at this point, but I can pull that up and send it to you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And then one other question on one of your other slides. I didn't know if it was just you rounding on your slide, or, because you had, 6,000 doses had been administered, 1,900 first-dose appointments had been scheduled, but then you said you had 8,000 booster appointments booked. So my question was, did you round, or are we vaccinating people that got a first dose somewhere else and they're now coming to the site for their second dose, or?
We have done some of that, absolutely. We have done some of that, where we have encountered some first-dose orphans, individuals who have recently moved into King County or into Samamish area, and we've been able to accommodate that as well.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Thanks, Andrew. I like the charts. Really great way to tell a story and a lot of good news on them. Focusing on the vaccination rate, 83% is outstanding for one, I guess, even a couple of our ZIP codes, we're in the 80% range. One thing I do want to ask you, and I've heard, I heard you in this presentation, I've heard others state this, is some stats came out recently that 66 million people have been vaccinated in the first wave. 5,800 got COVID. Of the 5,800, 90% were minor cases, meaning only about 580 out of 66 million were hospitalizations presumably. With that data, how do you transition from the comment that this is good news, everybody's vaccinated, but don't let your guard down, still wear a mask?
I think just looking at the graph, or just in general, you're talking, one, a population that is only over 16, that is, those are the only people that have been able to get vaccinated so far. And most of the people who live and work in Samamish were at a point now where they're venturing out. They're going outside of Samamish. They're going into restaurants. They're going into bars, and they're leaving the borders. Samamish has got great numbers, but you could drive somewhere else, a neighboring city over, and see less. King County as a whole is still only 66% vaccinated, and you're going to see a lot of travelers across, you know, from multiple counties, multiple states that people interact with every day. So it's, it's, you're, you don't have that pot anymore as you're going out and going on vacations. I've, you can go to Facebook any day of the week and see probably half a dozen of your friends that are on a vacation. Disneyland is open. Hawaii is open, you know, and people are traveling. They're going to continue to expose themselves. So if, you know, Samamish had, you know, closed borders, we'd probably be pretty good. But I think that until the nation as a whole, or the state as a whole, and even the world as a whole gets a grasp on this, you know, look what's happening in India, where you're seeing catastrophic loss, you know, across the board, a health system on the brink or basically collapsing, and they're setting new records for positive cases every day because of some of these strong variants that are continuing. And nothing's saying a variant cannot grow and change and continue to develop in younger populations who aren't even vaccine-eligible yet if we're going to continue to allow everyone to socialize who's not vaccinated.
Okay, I may have misunderstood your comment because I thought you said if you're vaccinated and you had adequate waiting period, don't let, vaccinated people should not let their guard down and continue wearing masks. That's not what you said?
I think they absolutely should still wear a mask, because there's nothing saying that a vaccinated person cannot still possibly catch the virus and transmit it to someone who's not. That is still, they're still trying to identify how contagious, and yes, you may result in, you most likely will not have serious illness. You most likely will not have serious death, but if you are 100% vaccinated, you might still carry that virus.
5,800 out of 66 million, very small percentage, so.
Who's been tested? How many vaccinated people do you know are going out and getting tested every day?
Okay, I understand. You're managing to a very small risk. Okay.
Okay, then, councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that what Andrew just said, and to be a little bit firmer about that, you can absolutely be a carrier. So if you have been vaccinated, you can absolutely still carry and transmit the virus to others. So it's really important for people to understand that, that the vaccine is triggering your immune system, to have your immune system response ready to go. So when, when or if you come in contact with the virus, your defenses are ready to go, and it fights it off in your body. But you can still be a carrier. You can still bring it home. You can still pass it to others. So the CDC, I'm on the CDC site right now, and it says for vaccinated individuals in indoor spaces, that you, fully vaccinated people should continue to wear a mask that fits snugly against the sides of your face and doesn't have gaps, covers coughs and sneezes, continue to wash your hands often, and follow any applicable workplace or school guidance. So I think that's why you're seeing cases up, but hospitalizations and deaths are down, because our defenses, if you're, if you're fully vaccinated, your defenses are helping you, but we're still spreading it. And remember, none of our kids under the age of 16 are eligible to get the vaccine at all. Not yet, hopefully soon, but not yet. And so we really do have to continue to have the mask, continue to distance, continue to work from home whenever possible, until everyone is, everyone who can be, is fully vaccinated. vaccinated so that we can make sure people are not going to get sick and die. And then if it does spread, it's not as big of a deal.
Yeah.
I just want to continue to put that, that is the CDC guidance. Fully vaccinated people when indoors should absolutely continue to distance and wear masks.
No, 100% agree, Councilmember, thank you. And I don't want the continuation of mitigations to be a reason why someone does not get a vaccine. The vaccine is still the number-one best way to end this pandemic, and that's across the board. And it is the number-one best way to protect yourself if you are exposed to COVID from serious injury and, or ser, serious illness and death.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we should do it all, right? Get vaccinated and wear a mask and distance and wash your hands, and then we'll get this thing under control.
Absolutely. I haven't caught a cold in eight and a half. It's amazing.
Exactly.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Andrew? Okay, I think that's it. Great job.
Wonderful. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have public comment, and I want to start it off with a note saying that we are no longer, and this is a reminder because I know we have some calls on this evening, but no longer receiving the presentations for people who put in any, anything for slides. So we are no longer receiving presentations during public comment, but this information is sent on to council members and public, the public can request a copy from the city clerk.
Madam Mayor, can you explain why we're continually changing our policy? We've always presented.
Changing policy, it was just that it's a matter of that, you know, it comes down to you're going to have competing slides, you can have competing slides in a meeting, and you can have one or the other. So rather than doing that, we're just not going to have slide presentations. And that was just the call of the chair, so that was just the call that I made. So I can take, I'll take the blame for it. So somebody else chairs a meeting, they can make a different call, but I'm making the call that we do not have slides.
Okay.
Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment, written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to the city clerk, lhatchey@samamish.us, and the city council, at citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment, up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 the day of the meeting. Phone number 1-571-317-3122, and the access code of 929-348-197. Once you have joined the meeting, you will be placed on mute, and the meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. And Lita, do you want to finish?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Currently I see we have three people who have called in to provide public comment tonight. I will unmute the callers in the order that they have joined the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say unmuted, and then you will have three minutes to provide public comment. 15 seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted. Please start your comments by stating your name and the city that you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. Caller number one.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Jack Mo, and I live in Sammamish. I am from the International Community School in Kirkland, but I represent a group that wishes to improve Sammamish by working with both the local government and the businesses to add more electric car charging stations. As of 2019, Washington had the second-most electric car purchases per 100,000 out of all 50 states, and the popularity of electric vehicles is only increasing, and it's predicted that by 2035, at least 25% of car sales in the U.S. will be electric. We believe that adding more stations around Sammamish will not only support those who get electric cars, but also motivate people to get them too. And we think that this could help further improve the environment that Sammamish provides of being a clean and green city. My team would like to work closer with the city of Sammamish to further improve our community and come up with the most efficient places to add charging stations to further add to the current supplies around five to 10 charging stations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now unmute caller number two.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are, Mr. Romero.
All right. Wanted to first make a comment to city's history. There isn't a precedent for taking out slides. With that, good evening. I am deputy, former deputy mayor Romero Valderrama, and my comments refer to much of this, of the lack of transparency. Much of the council actions are hidden from the public, and as we've heard in public at times, hidden from other council members. This is exacerbated by the use of legal privilege and executive sessions inappropriately. In the slide that will not be shown here in council, I contrast what I had said in December of last year after the budget and read council actions. In December, I talked about how you have more than tripled the legal budget from 800,000 to 2.8 million. In the last four months, you've added three new suits, Superior Court hearing examiner and Growth Management Board challenges. In December, I talked about the 4.5 million for TSI, Burck, Fair Peers, and 2 million more for LTE staff. Yet in the four months, you've added a million more for Burck and TSI, and more staff for arbitrary no-growth or low-growth studies. In December, I cited that you had raised for the first time the taxes of 6% in one year alone, and at the same time managed to watch income fees, construction sales tax, permit fees plummeted and expenses rocket while having no new revenue to cover them. In December, I pointed out that you had now created a deficit for the first time in the city history of 5.6 million, and to do that, you used all of the 9 million in contingency funds. In the next four months, now, not only have you overspent and mismanaged on Issaquah, Pine Lake Roads and other projects, you've also overspent restricted funds that you have to pay back. And now, as a result of that, the real deficit has now more than doubled. In December, I had cited that you had budgeted 34 million less on capital funding projects in 2001 and 2002. Mind you, that that was done despite the majority of that council running on infrastructure and low growth. And yet, on April 6, you put another million dollars on engineering studies to support no-growth plans that do not support our comprehensive plan and the invalidated concurrency model as determined by the Growth Management Hearing Board. Yet, city also ignores their own arbitrary 400 to 600 million of infrastructure deficiencies that you have determined, and it was revealed in several council meetings in 2020. However, despite all of those arbitrary numbers, city has no new significant transportation projects planned the last two years. So previously, council has called a do-nothing dysfunctional chaotic council in public. In the last few meetings, you've been called imbeciles and idiots by the public, and even your council member Ross during your moratorium discussions called it a clown show.
Thank you, Mr. Valderrama. I've missed you.
I will now unmute caller number three.
Good evening, council. Oh, sorry, I'll start over. Good evening, council, Paul Stickney in Sammamish here. I've sent in a public comment and three PDFs today, and this is only going to be a very brief recap of what will be available for you on the civic web and in, and in email. I got a copy of a version of the EIS by doing a PRR of someone else's PRR, and to my surprise, roughly 70% of, of almost 150 pages of EIS information was redacted. As many of you know, I've been attending a lot of meetings since 2013. I've seen a lot of draft planning docs, and I've never seen anything like this to be so redacted, especially one year into the process. You know, I could more understand it a couple months into the process, but a year into the process, it's, it's hard to understand. It doesn't seem to be open, transparent, or in line with the guidelines of open public meetings and full disclosure and transparency. One of the key things in there that was not redacted, however, was two of the newer alternatives in the EIS, alternative 3A and 3B, had specific volume and capacity numbers, one set lower than what was adopted in May of 19, and one set higher. The issue is not that there are those numbers. The issue is that there's been no discussion by council of what those numbers would be, and these are significant. They're at the core of everything that you're doing in the CIS. So what's troubling and begs an important question is, was it staff and consultants having the rein to determine what those two alternative 3A and 3B corridor and segment numbers were? Or was it city council's policy direction, but not out in open public meetings? The other things to add real quickly is the housing section is pretty much intact and not redacted, and what's missing is precise internal surplus and shortage housing supply gap numbers, and there's been no data obtained from statistically valid surveys to know what are the internal needs and wants to retain people in Sammamish, one of six.
15 seconds.
Stay over, over their cycle of life. So simply put, I suggest that the EIS gets altered and you get sufficient information to round out and include analyzing housing. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney.
Madam Mayor, that is all the public comment for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there a way that we can all get a copy of, that's the second person that has approached us about seeing EIS that, I know I haven't seen, so is there a way, some way that we can get a copy of that so we are?
Mayor, members of council, staff, and the consultants are working on that and will be providing you a schedule very, very soon. And to note for the viewing public and for the council, the council has not yet seen the EIS and has not had input into the EIS process, for the record.
Right. Well, so, Mr. Stickney, I do want to note, for you to note that, because I don't, so to answer any questions from your call or anything, we have not seen anything to do with the EIS. So when you put in for your public records request, I haven't read what you're reading. So as, as soon as we've read something, then we could respond, but for right now, we haven't seen anything.
That's correct, Mayor. And for the record, we're not to a point where the council has input into that process so as to keep it in compliance with the law and planning and how we are going about completion of the EIS. There will become a time and a place for that, but not yet.
Okay. I'm hoping it's going to be sooner than later as we're, we are starting to get people that are putting in these public records requests. Okay. Next up, we have got the, we've got an executive session. So the executive session is to review the performance of public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101G collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42.30.1404A and potential land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B. I'm guessing this is going to be a good hour and a half to two hours. I mean, this is going to be a long one. So folks, if you haven't had dinner, go do that. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart, did you have a question? Oh, okay.
That was me.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
That's okay. I just want, we had talked about 1F as well.
Okay, so.
And I'd like to make a motion to include Councilmember Stewart in the executive session.
A second, Beth.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for including Councilmember Stewart in executive session. Councilmember Stewart, I would ask that you not vote on this. So all those in favor, just say aye.
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 Okay, so that, that is a two, 4 to 2. Okay. So continuing on going into, so Christie, the other one you wanted to add, the motion does not pass.
Just studying 1F. And, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if, what that, I didn't hear a vote for the nays, so I'm confused. 4 to, if it passed, the motion I made, or it did not pass, sorry.
Nay.
Okay, raise your, oh, so, raise your hand, 1, 2, 3, 4. The nays have, so opposed, 4 to 2. Okay, so RCW 42.30.1101F, correct? Christie?
Yes, question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, my question is, will there be any action by the council after this executive session?
I, I don't know at this time. If there is, we will come out and report it.
But there is a potential that there could be action after the council, after the executive session.
I, I guess it could be possible, but I don't know that.
So again, I just want to go on the record that if you're going to discuss something that requires action after the executive session, I will not have any of that information in my vote.
Yes, correct. So going back to, it is, what time is it now? 7:35, 25, I would guess this is going to be, what do you want to say, two hours? Let's say two hours coming back at 9:25.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Did we vote on, one, the union negotiations only, and do we have other executive session topics?
We have four things.
So I think we should vote one at a time of whether or not to include, exclude.
Now, I.
I make the motion that we affirm or exclude or include Councilmember Stewart from each of the individual topics and vote on them one at a time, disposition them one at a time. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second that we go through these one at a time. I don't know what difference that makes because I don't know if there's going to be any, I don't know if there's going to be anything that comes out of any of them at the end, so I don't, okay. But we'll do that. RCW 42.30.1101G.
Madam Mayor, the motion is whether or not we should vote one at a time.
Oh, okay. So the motion is as to whether or not we should vote on them one at a time.
Did you hear anybody?
One at a time. Okay, so that's the motion. All those in voting on them one at a time, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
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 Nay. Okay, so that motion, the nays have that with four to. Okay, we are going into executive session.
Did you vote on, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I didn't hear, did you guys actually take the vote? I didn't hear the vote.
Yes, the vote was to vote on them separately than to change for executive session to allow for them to be voted on separately, and that also failed.
I have another motion then.
Okay.
In light of the fact that the performance review is an annual process, and it's been delayed repeatedly, and we need to get it done, and I think it's something our community expects the full seven-member council to weigh in on, I would make the motion that we include Councilmember Stewart in that one.
Okay, I don't believe that that's going to be finished in one session or two sessions or probably even three, but, so, okay, here we, so you want her included in today's, or can you specify that?
It's on the agenda today.
It is, but it's probably going to be on the agenda for the next three. So which, what do you want her included in?
I'm just concerned that these are going to, the effectiveness of excluding Councilmember Stewart actually makes it more difficult for the council to make decisions, because these issues are either annual and big issues and/or may continue, or we have to make decisions at the dice, and not having everybody informed of the issue they're voting on is not helpful, as well as we're going to have to bring Councilmember up to speed later anyway, so I'm just concerned about that, because I'm having second thoughts of the effectiveness of the punishment, quite frankly.
Councilmember Gambler.
Yeah, the council voted fairly distinctly on this. I don't know why we'd be re-debating with consistent two to four votes, but be that as it may, the council spoke with, I believe it's unanimous on this, and backtracking on it doesn't make a lot of sense. Of course, there's going to be repercussions. We realized that when we voted. We voted for a reason. Kind of stymied on why this would be even brought up.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. So all those in favor in including...
You've got Councilmember Stewart in queue.
In queue, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, again, I'd just like to go on record that it is not clear that it is even legal to include me on this information, that you're providing information to some council members and not to all. And so this is likely not illegal, and it does prevent me from doing my job and representing the residents of Sammamish as an elected official.
Okay, if there is any more, and actually, it does not, because you would not be missing out on the entirety of this, so it does not prevent you from doing your job. So again, we are back to there being a motion on the floor and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Four to.
That would be three. I went ahead and voted.
I noticed that, thank you. Okay, if there are no more discussions to be had here, we're going into executive session. Again, for two hours, it is now 7:32, will be out at 9:32. Okay. See everybody on the other side for the public. Go have dinner, maybe a glass of wine. See you in two hours. This is the regular council meeting for May 4, 2021, and we are currently in executive session, which we will be extending for 15 minutes. Again, we will be extending executive session for 15 minutes. Thank you. Okay, council, are we all back? I believe we are. Okay, all right. So next up, we have got presentations and proclamations, and we have two this evening. We have... Oops, thank you, we have to back up, folks. We have the consent calendar this evening, which we did not do. So I need a motion to pass the consent calendar, so I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a first and a second.
Mayor, we need to remove the meeting minutes. They're missing one of the, from the, shoot, was it the six or the, there only is one person listed as giving public comment, even though there were two people who gave public comment in that meeting. We need to get those minutes corrected. So can we pull the meeting minutes off until we can get those corrected?
Do you know which one that is? The fifteenth or the twentieth? And that's, you know, what the county and stuff does, which is simply just state that public comment was given. But do you know which mini it was?
I don't, I'd have to double-check. I just know that it's missing someone, so can we just pull them off and get it corrected for next week?
Okay. Does it... Okay.
I move that we remove, well, normally for consent, we don't have to have a motion.
Yeah, we don't usually question that. Okay, so pulling off five and six, the minutes of five and six, so that we can check and make sure that a correction is made, and either switch it or figure out which one it is. Okay. All right, so that leaves us with consent calendar being one through four. We have a motion on the table. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent calendar as adjusted, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're on to presentations and proclamations, and we still have two this evening. One is for the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and the second is for Affordable Housing Week. So, so how about, Councilmember Ross, do you want to read the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month?
I would love to. Do you want to go to the, oh, that's second, yeah, do that second as scheduled.
Okay, and then Affordable Housing Week. So Councilmember Stewart, do you, would you like to read the Affordable Housing Week?
You know, normally, I very much would, except that I don't completely agree with everything written in this one, so...
Oh, all right.
I struggle with the fact that we state that it should only be built near transit, and that we simply state that we endorse the goals, but not that we're going to support the building of any additional affordable housing in our community.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Odell, would you like to read it?
I'm not there yet. I'm still trying to find that particular piece.
Okay, Councilmember Trinh.
Sammamish, Washington proclamation, Affordable Housing Week, May 10 through the 14, 2021. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity, and whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas, and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas the most recent point in time count found 6,320 people in King County sleeping outdoors without shelter in January of 2018, and 782 families are considered housing insecure because they are spending more than half of their income on rent and utilities. And whereas the combined cost burden of housing plus transportation can be substantially reduced by locating affordable housing opportunities in proximity to transit. And whereas the all-home community identifies affordable housing as a critical component of making homelessness rare, brief, and one-time. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas the Association of Washington Cities determined that enhanced efforts address housing shortages and affordability was a critical priority for the 2019 legislative session. And whereas, united in an effort to raise public awareness, communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week efforts to inform the public of the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing in our communities. And whereas, the City of Sammamish endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity, and that all people in it live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Sammamish does hereby proclaim the week of May 10 through the 14, 2021, as Affordable Housing Week.
Thank you, Councilmember. And then Councilmember Ross.
I apologize, unless you could put it on the big screen, I cannot get it loaded from my device. Proclamation, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2021. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage in the United States was celebrated beginning in 1978, and was made into a month-long event in 1992. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, and Pacific Islands. And whereas native Hawaiians, Chinese, and Japanese were the first to migrate to the Pacific Northwest, and were known for handling canoes and transporting goods, construction, and railroad expansion. And whereas Asian Pacific encompasses all of Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, including New Guinea, New Caledonia, Vanuatu, Fiji, and the Solomon Islands, Micronesia, Micronesia, including Marianas, Guam, Wake Island, Palau, Marshall Islands, Kiribati, Nauru, and the Federated States of Micronesia, and Polynesia, including New Zealand, Hawaiian Islands, Rattuma, Midway Islands, Samoa, American Samoa, Tonga, Tuvalu, Cook Islands, French Polynesia, and Eastern Island. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we acknowledge Asians and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Washington for more than 200 years. The Asian population in Sammamish is 31.7% per U.S. Census, contributing into Washington's and the United States economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments, despite institutional and systematic injustice designed to prevent and limit these achievements and contributions. And whereas during Asian AAPI Heritage Month, we acknowledge the additional determination, hard work, and perseverance AAPI must put forth to be heard and seen, and that these additional efforts are a result of inequitable institutional and systematic injustices. And whereas despite these contributions and leadership, the role of AAPI in U.S. history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American. Be it further resolved that the City of Sammamish strongly encourages our staff and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Asian American and Pacific Islanders to our country, our state, our city, and our schools in May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ross. Okay, next up, we have East Side Transportation Partnership, and I believe this is Jeff.
Yes, it is, Mayor, thank you. This is Public Works Director Jeff Ellicash. For this agenda item, transportation planner Doug McIntyre will be making a brief staff presentation. Doug?
Hey, Jeff. Doug McIntyre, transportation planner with the Department of Public Works. Good evening, Mayor Moran and members of the council. Today, we have a question for the council about appointees to the East Side Transportation Partnership. The ETP is a subregional board of King County that meets to collaboratively discuss transportation issues in the region and work towards solutions on the regional level. It's made up of elected officials, as well as some representatives from transit agencies and other private agencies. So last month, staff was contacted by King County regarding a vacancy that we have. We are allocated two regular members and an alternate. Currently, our regular member is Councilmember Ross with Mayor Moran as the alternate, so we have a vacant position to fill. So the council is being asked to fill that tonight. The meetings are held every second Friday of every month. They're held in the mornings at 7:30. They last about an hour and a half to two hours, depending on the topics. During COVID, these meetings are happening virtually. They were also happening with the other two transportation boards in King County, the South County Area Transportation Board and the Seashore Transportation Board. Recently, though, King County has now gone to independent meetings of each of those boards. So with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Moran.
Okay, so in the past, what we would have done is just moved up our alternate, but we have got Mr., or when Councilmember Odell entered, he has also said that he's interested. So we're going to go back and talk about who wants to be on as members and who wants to be on as the alternate. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I talked to Jeff, and I asked him, maybe we want to reconsider appointments with Councilmember Odell coming on board. Mr. Odell expressed interest and has had some prior engagement in ETP, and so I would recommend, and I'm involved in several other committees already, and so I certainly have my opportunities, I would recommend that we make Councilmember Odell as the prime on the ETP instead of myself.
So there's two seats, so are you saying it would be Councilmember Odell rather than yourself, and then myself? Would you want to be the alternate?
Mayor, if you want to be alternate, I would step aside for you to be alternate as well. I don't want to disrupt your engagement in that committee either.
Okay, because right now I am alternate, but I've been going to all the East Side Transportation Association meetings.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent any of us from attending. So, yeah, I'll just, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
My motion is that the prime be Tom Odell and the alternate be Karen. My motion is that the prime be Tom Odell and the alternate be Karen Moran.
Okay, so we get two seats now, or wait, we have two seats and then one alternate. So we have-
Oh, it's two and one.
Right.
Okay.
And so-
So do you want to be the second seat?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion differently. My motion is Tom Odell and Karen Moran are the two seats that sit on the ETP for Sammamish, and myself, Chris Ross, will be the alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Happy to do it. Been here before and enjoyed it.
Yeah, me too. I do enjoy that committee. Okay, all right. Any other discussion? And I'm looking here. Councilmember Trinh?
I was going to make the motion. I seconded it, so I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Gamblin?
I've heard everything I needed to hear. Thank you.
Okay, no other, nothing else in the queue? So all those in favor of the motion and the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Okay, well, that was fast. We're almost back, we're almost back on schedule. Okay, so going on to our next bit, our next bit of business is the Regional Transportation Plan. And Jeff, I believe this is you as well.
Correct. Doug and I will tie a team on this once again. Mayor, city council members, city manager, Puget Sound Regional Council defines regional capacity projects as those projects adding capacity to the regional system and includes roadways, transit, bike and pets, and other types on a principal arterial or state route. These projects must be approved on the regional transportation list before proceeding towards funding and implementation. So with that, our transportation planner Doug McIntyre will make a brief presentation. Doug?
Thank you, Jeff. Doug McIntyre, Transportation Planner here again. So Jeff has covered the overview of this issue. I would add that the Regional Transportation Plan is a critical regional document done by PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, on a four-year recurring basis. So the last one was updated, or sorry, adopted in May of 2018, and the update is planned for May of 2022. Part of this process is a call for projects, and as Jeff mentioned, these projects are put onto the list for as sort of a first step towards being allowed to apply for federal funding via PSRC. So it does not commit the city to any financial obligations. It is a eligibility step for future grant funding if we seek it. In the packet, there was a map of projects. I'm going to share my screen real quick. Bear with me one second. Okay, I'm hoping everybody can see this. So this map outlines the conceptual project extents for the various projects that have been discussed in the past on principal arterials in Sammamish. As you can see, they're broken into phases. The project labels are adjacent to the magenta lines on the map. The, as, I'm kind of glossed over this, but we have three principal arterials in Sammamish, 228 slash Sahali. It's called Pine Lake Road, and Isqo Falls City Road slash Duty Hill Road. So those are the projects that are, that we're looking to submit for this regional capacity project call for submissions. I don't want to go into each of the project details. I think that would probably be a little bit too lengthy. Say that we did try to provide as much as we could in terms of conceptual project descriptions, project scopes. We have also, for informational purposes, some project cost estimates that were done in the first quarter of 2020. So they are meant to be informational. They're the best that we have at this point in time. They also do not include right-of-way acquisition costs, so they, they are, there are some caveats to that. So I think with that, I'll probably open it up for discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hey, quick question for you, Doug and Jeff. On page, I believe it's page three of the document, one of the paragraphs begins, "Sammamish has three principal arterial roads, 228, Isqo Pine Lake, and Isqo Falls City." Do you guys not include Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway as an arterial?
It is classified as a minor arterial.
It's a minor arterial? Is that by, is that by volume?
Functional classification is a function of the design of the road, as well as speed limits, variety of other factors. But the hierarchy is principal arterial, minor arterial, collector arterial, and then local roads, neighborhood roads.
Okay, so this doesn't fit within some pre-designed matrix for what makes it a arterial or a minor arterial?
That's correct, yeah. It is, it meets the minor arterial classification.
Okay, and this, this is only looking at major arterials for potential improvement?
The criteria from PSRC, Doug, I'll take that, is, it clearly states, and I think we were able to give it to you in one of the handouts there, but for this capacity list, it is only principal arterials and state routes that go onto this particular list. There are other ways to compete for federal funds on these other classified streets, but for this bucket, it's clearly just arterials and state routes.
Okay, you got it. Thanks, Doug and Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I'm just looking at the list of projects we have here, and previously, when we were looking for congressional help on projects, we did this kind of shotgun approach. When I'm looking at the chart here, I mean, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 projects here, and I know that those, some of those are broken out. You've got TR 24 and TR 26, which are the same principal arterial, but still, you have them broken down into different projects with different dollar volumes associated with them. My suggestion would be, because I previously served PSRC, and when they go through and do these, we are not going to get funding if we just, like, throw out all these projects and like, here, help us. I think we need to narrow down our list. I think it needs to be a shovel-ready project. I think that the project, and maybe not totally shovel-ready, but, you know, we've gotten some funding for the Sahali Way intersection. We may be able to, you know, use that to our advantage with PSRC as well. But I think if, if we're going to submit projects for PSRC to consider, we should probably go back and look and see what they have picked previously so that we can better our chances. But I would highly recommend that Sammamish doesn't run in with 10 projects. I think you pick one, maybe two, and hope, and put a lot of work and effort into those one or two, rather than the peanut buttering of all these projects that we have so that we're potentially rising to the surface for being chosen.
Related to that, two points. One, the applications are due on May 7th, which is just a timing issue that makes it a challenge. From a staff recommendation standpoint, if we're looking at this list, it would be my recommendation that we would include TR 19, TR 28, and TR 02. Those are active, improvements are happening in those corridors or potentially happening. So if we were to pair the list for purposes of going forward, that would be staff's recommendation to consider TR 19, TR 28, and TR 02. TR 02 is Isqo Pine Lake Road. We're well in design on that project. TR 28 has the school district, is attempting to build a high school and grade school in that area, and TR 19 was a very high priority project in our legislative group. So to your point, if you're looking for three, that would be my recommendation.
Well, I'm not, I would never go into PSRC with those three projects. And I'm not saying they're not worthy projects. I'm just saying, you know, the dollar volume attached to them, I still think that, that much is too much in an ask. But then again, I think, you know, I don't know how much due diligence staff was able to kind of, if you were able to look at, you know, historically, what PSRC has chosen for their projects. I recall, you know, just barely off the top of my head, they're not picking more than one project per jurisdiction. I don't think I recall them doing that in the past, maybe they have, but I'm just kind of curious as to which projects they pick. Like, are they going to pick one where we're more likely to execute on it in the next, you know, two years, five years? Because, you know, I know we're in the planning phase of Isqo Pine Lake Road, but we're not executing on that anytime soon. I don't think that they're likely to probably give us funding for TR 02 because technically speaking, we still have to do the second phase of Isqo Falls City Road first before we circle back on that one. So I think those funds would probably not be given to the City of Sammamish on a project that is probably five years away from, you know, having a shovel stuck in the ground. So I, I don't know. You said TR 19, that's, you know, the intersection. I think the fact that Wasdott and King County are involved in that too probably makes it a more higher-level project for PSRC because they're not just touching one jurisdiction, but they're touching three with funding potentially for that. Plus, we, you know, through the state, we also receive funds, and I suspect that might play well with funding sources from multiple locales. So anyway, I, that's just kind of my two cents. And then, you know, we've got Phase Two of Isqo Falls City Road, and we've got a grant tethered to that one, so I'm assuming we're proceeding forward on that one. I don't know what it looks like yet, but that's just kind of my thought. I would go in with one or two.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would add two thoughts to what you said. So I did look at what Sammamish had submitted in the past, and we did submit the Sahali project. Granted, the extents of that project were a little bit different at the time. It was northeast 25th to the city limits. And then we also submitted Isqo Falls City Road, both Phase One and Phase Two. So that's what we have done in the past. And the PSRC process, they have stated that for all projects that are already on the list, they need to be resubmitted to the list. So if we wanted to keep those, we have to reapply for them.
Okay, I'm trying to look through the, Christie, were you done?
I'm done. Yep, I think you've got Councilmember Odell next.
Okay, then Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Councilmember Malchow just said a lot of what I was going to say. The only thing I will say in addition is that I think TR 05 should be up there fairly high on the priority list as well. We haven't done much for the North End lately. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going through to make sure everybody has spoke on round one first, so I'm going to Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. Deputy Mayor asked a question, and I don't know if you guys have the answer to that, but what has PSRC in the past given money to? And do we, do we understand if there's some sort of a pattern or a trend that we can see so that we choose wisely?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at that. I don't have that specific information at hand. Be a piece that we can research further this week with PSRC staff to get a better understanding of past projects in the region. The intention, as we understood it, was to get projects on the list first and then pursue future grant funding on the, on the funding calls. But to answer the question specifically, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, and then I would also tend to agree that we have a number of projects on here that don't have a lot of definition in terms of, you know, agreement on what that's going to be, and I think that puts them at less, less chance of getting that, and we may want to spend whatever time we have, if we only have three days to get this submitted, to have one or two that we can put a lot into it and really make them look better. I would agree that the intersection on Sahali, I mean, the intersection at Sahali and 202 is a prime target because, again, it is multiple jurisdictions. It intersects with another major roadway. I think that's an excellent choice. I think that there are some really tangible prospects for how to improve that intersection there, and I think that that would fit in with the regional, you know, with regional needs. As the Marymore Light Rail Station opens, I think you're going to see a lot more traffic along 202 coming in from the east, so I think that that does have a much larger regional benefit. So I think that's a really great one. While I think that the North End of Sahali, we've discussed it many times, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there, I don't think we have a solid design of something that says, here's what we want to go forward with, and I think that puts any of those projects kind of in a gray zone for PSRC to really want to get behind. The one question I have for TR 19, though, is there's no, there's no costs associated with that on the list? Do we have costs for that?
The most recent we had was from the Wasdott study that was done, I believe, a couple years ago, maybe, maybe a year and a half ago, and it was in the vicinity of 11 million, I believe. And when, during the state legislative session, there was some potential funding that ended up not getting approved, but they had it at 12 million. So I don't know if that was an escalation to the previous cost or if they had done additional scoping, but it's in that vicinity, I believe. The city did not conduct that cost estimate.
So would you guys use that number for your submission?
Yes.
Okay. And then Jeff, you had mentioned that, you know, the deadline is coming up on the 7th. Did this catch us by surprise? Is that why, it sounds like we're kind of trying to hurry up and select here?
Yes, in one respect, it was something that was not on my radar, and when the call came out, we were reacting to get this onto the council calendar as quickly as we could, and this is where it slotted with our ability to get in front of you.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. Yeah, I would tend to agree with Deputy Mayor that it's probably best if we were to focus it down and not come in with a shotgun approach, so I would, I would pick the top couple of projects. Isqo Falls City Road, Phase Two, certainly has grant money already behind it, although I know that this council has expressed concerns about continuing with that project, so I think we need to get consensus there on that. I think that would be an excellent choice as well to add to that. And then if there's work down around TR 28, does that include improvements that would need to be done with the schools? Because again, I think that would be potential improvements that would potentially look favorably since there are new schools going in down there.
There's possibly an opportunity associated with TR 28 to partner. The school is already doing substantial frontage improvements. We have as an intersection at 40th, a need for improvement, and then through that intersection up to Isqo Pine Lake Road, potentially is where the balance of the project, you know, so there's an opportunity to leverage as a possibility, the frontage improvements that the school's already planning to do.
Okay, I would, I would put that at the top of my list as well. I think anytime we can work with someone who's already doing improvements and we can try to get some of that work done at the same time, I think that's always a great thing. Not tearing up a road twice is a good, good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, my comments were kind of along with, I guess, with Councilmember Stewart said. So mine world with TR 28 and TR 19, oh, no, TR 27 and TR 28. So those going along with where the school is, having the school district, working with the school district on those. It seems like the school district would be very interested in wanting to pursue those because those would be in the area of where the new school's coming in off of the Isqo Falls City Road. Isn't that correct?
Are you, Mayor, are you speaking of- Are you, mayor, are you speaking of-
Looking at the Issaquah, off of, I'm sorry, Issaquah Pine Lake Road.
TR-03 is where the new elementary is.
Yeah, so I'm looking, so I'm sorry, I've got my, so it's the Issaquah Pine Lake Road. So I'm looking for the ones around where the new school is, so making sure that we work with the school district to make sure that those will be at the top of the list. But my other concern is making sure that TR-05, we really haven't done anything on that north end. And so I want to make sure TR-05, I think, should be toward the top of the list.
May I, ma'am, for clarity? Did you really mean TR-28?
Yeah, so, and I've got to look because I can't read. This is very small on here, and I've got it, oh. Here it is, okay. So, oh, yes, so I can see it now on the big one. Okay, so I'm looking at TR-28. So down for where the new school is. So have we worked with the school district on any and all of the roads that would lead? I'm trying to make sure that any of our major arterials that would have the schools on, we've worked with the school districts. So we do anything and everything we can do to keep them out of neighborhoods with those, with their school traffic?
Right. Related to TR-02, the entrance there, right at the intersection, that's school number 16. We had purchased right-of-way and are partnered to some degree on that project with the school district. And at TR-28, we've just begun the dialogue as the potential that this could be a grant corridor project. Tom Mullins, the director there, is on vacation this week, but when he gets back, we plan to have further discussions on that topic as well, and then hopefully report back to council.
Okay, that would be great, because it'd be great if we could keep them out of those neighborhoods. Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions? Looks like we do not. Excellent. Wow.
Does staff have any direction?
You know, I think the consensus that we heard was, I could be wrong, but I heard consensus around TR-28, possibly TR-02, TR-05, and TR-19.
But I think that's too many. And I don't know if the rest of the council agrees or not, but I think we need to narrow it down. So I'm not sure how we do that.
Okay, deputy mayor, could you repeat what you just said, because I only got part of that?
Yeah, Jeff just named about five different projects. And I think, I think we might need to narrow that down. I don't think we should go in asking for funding for five projects. I think we should ask for tops. I think we should ask for funding for two. But really, I think we'd be better off asking for one, one project that we really, really want. I just don't know if we can get consensus amongst the council as to what those one or two projects are. I just, I didn't want to leave staff, you know, seven different directions on this. And so I'm suggesting, as council, we might need to narrow this down. They're all worthy. They're all important. But I don't know how we get to one or two.
I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion that we direct staff to submit for TR-19 and TR-28. Those were the only two that I heard.
Again.
Consensus on.
I'd like to propose an amendment that we also include TR-05.
I would second that. Okay, so we have-
I'd like to amend to also include TR-05 on the list. I think that TR-05 is worthy of being included, at least from a planning point of view. We have a number of versions of the Sahali Way Plan that have been looked at in the past. So that is probably closer to being shovel-ready than some others. But also, I think there's certain things that could be done up there in the interim that would fit with the plan in the long run, that need to be done sooner, sooner than later. So I'm, basically, I'm suggesting a phased approach to TR-05.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm in the queue.
Yeah, I'm trying, I just saw that. Okay, so deputy mayor?
Thanks. I don't disagree that TR-05 is important and that the north end is in dire need of some love. I just think we're putting the cart before the horse on TR-05. We're in the throes of an EIS. We have lots to determine. We have no idea what that project's going to look like. So while I totally agree with councilmember Odell that it needs something, I just don't, it's, we haven't defined what the something is, and we're never going to get funding from PSRC for a project that we, is ill-defined. So while I support, you know, wanting something for TR-05, I just think the timing is off for a May 7th ask. So I will not be supporting the amendment.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adding TR-05, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is four. Opposed?
Nay.
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 So four, three. Motion passed. Okay, so now going back to the original motion, which was-
As amended.
As amended.
So there would be TR-19, TR-28, and now, as amended, TR-05.
Correct. Okay, and all those in favor of, as stated by councilmember Stewart? Any more discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent.
Thank you, mayor and city council. We appreciate your support and help on this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have got council reports, city manager report. Does anybody have a report that they need to do this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, in support of Affordable Housing Week, I would encourage folks to look for many events across the region from many of the affordable housing providers and other organizations that are working on affordable housing. Specifically, there are, this is Women Build Week as well with Habitat for Humanity, and I will be in Renton on Saturday, building some houses. So encourage the community to look for ways online. There are lots of online events, fundraisers for many different organizations to support affordable housing across the region.
Yep, and there's lots of classes and workshops, and I'm doing a workshop on Friday. So there's lots of, all sorts of stuff that's going on this week. So I really encourage everybody to get involved in those. Okay, and so if there is nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Good night.